This is a meeting of the L.A. City Councils. We have ten members present, speaking to begin. We have four members present.
Los cuatro. Se juntamos cuatro miembros. Tenemos gracias a Gercet, Dijan y Elitamos.
This is the one. All that we create so far, this is going to be for us. And then, there are times when she charged us more when it shouldn't have been so many. It just looked like that, and I called her and talked to her about it. You know, sometimes she undercharged, and I do apologize. But here, this is adjusting thing. They kept billing us for the children. And they get paid it, and I kept telling her, you know. We paid her, we sold her like six times, this is what's back. So finally, I said, "We're going to take it off of this, because you should get this amount." Um, you should get the 450 for this.
Period.
Yeah, this 150 subtracted, this is for the lost child. So, um, this is what you should get paid.
Okay, I'll just go over it into my house, and then I'll call them up. Like I said, they've been trying to call her, and she's not, she's, I mean, she must be very angry.
So, um, look at all this stuff. This is all this. And, um, when the guy called me from Montecarlo, I told him that the last time we got billed was September 14th. So, he said, "Okay," I'll send you the one for January. So, he sent it off.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, like I said, she was, I don't think it was, that she was overloaded. It's just that dispatching is a little bit difficult, because they have to, uh, if you're not used to it, it takes a while where they call you for Vietnamese, and they call you, let's say, uh, they say, uh, "We need a Japanese for when?" And they said, "Ten minutes ago." So then you have to drop everything and try to get someone for, uh, bring in a Vietnamese. And then they're a little bit big, and if she's not, if she wasn't ready to be answering the phone that way, she got behind another thing, and she got behind us. So they need someone very, but dispatching is only one, yeah. There's something we don't need anymore, because so many people answer the phone, and there's too many people, and too many messages, just go different places, I said, and so it has to be one. But the whole thing is that you have to be competent, you know? Either take notes, or, I mean, you have to have very good memory to remember what somebody calls you, ten minutes ago, and talk to you. So she was a little bit overweight, I guess, you know, but, um, I'm not glad she saw. Again, I feel sorry, but she was a little bit younger. Doesn't matter.
If there's any questions.
I will. Thank you very much. Perfect.
Good morning, everybody.
Okay. Buenos dias, a todos. Bienvenidos al Consilio de la Ciudad, la junta del Consilio de la Ciudad para hoy. Del 11 de 2002. Se junta todos los martes, mercoles y viernes a las 10 de la mañana. En el San Francisco de la Ciudad. Pueden estar en que nos sorcen el city hall, en la junta del Consilio. Pueden también en Medio Secundario 85. Y por la página de. Por favor. Este martes vamos a hablar del primer martes.
Para saludar la bandera.
Proud to have the Dors High Team, high school team here to champion, and we're going to have Mark Andrews to lead us in the pledge, as a member.
Por favor, parece.
Everyone, put your right hand on your heart. Ready, begin.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Gracias, Holden.
And I know you have a presentation to the public. But before we proceed with that. Colleagues, members of the public, please join me in welcoming Ralph Blough, and CEO of the Union Red Commission, who has joined us today and will lead us in our moment of inspiration.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the invitation.
Muchas gracias por la invitación.
I was out in the valley, and I saw an older gentleman backing his black Rolls Royce in a parking spot, and a young guy with a red sports car pulled into his spot, and spudly said to him as he got out, "You have to be young and quick to do that." The older gentleman thought, and he continued to back up and promptly squished the guy's car into a compact disc, and said, "You have to be old and rich to do that." Whether you're old and rich, or young and quick, all of us have something new to learn about leadership. Yesterday, we celebrated President's Day. Whether you're the President of the United States, the mayor, member of a city council, head of a corporation, or CEO of a rescue mission such as I am, leadership is always challenging, and it's often thankless. One of the elements that I've come to really appreciate about leadership is maintaining the element of compassion. It gives us a connection to the people that we serve. Now, in the work that I do, my passion is the gift of compassion, working with the poor and the homeless. What is your mental picture of a homeless person? If you had the microphone, you would probably say it's one of the guys sleeping in the box out on the street. Might be a drug or alcohol addicted individual, but certainly not a woman with three or four children. And unfortunately, at our mission, we have experienced about a thousand percent increase in homeless women and children due to domestic violence, due to economic issues, and it's a very serious issue. I just wanted to read you one quote from one of the ladies that we have the privilege of serving. "You're forced to live in 12-hour stretches. It's hard to accept job interviews, because you don't know until 4:00 p.m. the day before whether you'll be staying where your clothes are stored and where there's an iron." I really didn't know how to explain our situation. I teach my kids not to lie, but find myself lying, you know? Telling people I live somewhere else. All my dignity is taken away, because I'm here now. I tell my daughter things are going to be better, and to give me some time, and I'm really trying hard to get out of here. I say it in a tone of voice, so she understands, and she really doesn't. She knows, she just knows I'm sad, and she always tells me, "Mommy, I love you," because she knows I'm a nervous wreck. The wonderful women and children that we serve at the U.S. Mission are part of this city, and I realize that the city council has much to deal with beyond homelessness. You have police issues, and airport issues, and success issues, and constant pressures of budget and taxes. But let me just leave you with this one additional word of inspiration, because it has to do with, I think, all relationships. It has to do with individuals, growth. It has to do with marriage. It has to do with corporations. It has to do with city government. Healthy things grow. Growing things change. Changing things challenge us. Challenge forces us to trust God. Trust leads to obedience. Obedience makes us healthy. Healthy things grow. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to present these few moments to you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Mr. Clerk, first order of business. Promissions for, excuse me, approval of a minute. As Perry moves, and Mr. Holden seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. LaBange moves, and Ms. Ryan seconds. Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number 19, a request from Council District 1 to continue that matter till Friday, February 22nd. Members' request to continue item number 19 without objection. Item number 23, a request from Council District 7 to continue that matter, inasmuch as it may be discussed with item 18 on tomorrow's agenda. This is item number 23 regarding security technology upgrades in City Hall. Members' recommendation to continue item number 23 for a comprehensive discussion tomorrow. Also without objection. And item number 30A is a closed session matter. The city attorney has requested that matter be continued one day until February 20th. Item 30A, members' request to continue without objection. Item number four on the regular agenda is the appointment of David Iwata to the South Valley and Area Planning Commission. Is, uh, Mr. Iwata here? He's coming forward at this time. Uh, colleagues, public hearing has been held in the committee of the appointment of Mr. Iwata. Members wishing to speak, Mr. Ray.
House President. Colleagues. Mr. Iwata before, here before our committee. Wanted to take him for a cigarette, and just show him the background and the changes on this committee.
Yes, first of all, my name is David Iwata. I reside at 7061 Millsburg Ridge Circle in West Hills, California. Thank you very much for the opportunity. One of the things that we all strive for is the quality of life in the city of Los Angeles, and I hope to contribute to the South Area Planning Commission.
Watch your back up, please.
I spent 20 years in corporation, and recently retired, and am currently partnering in a marketing consulting firm, working in the West Valley.
Hi, Mr. Iwata. Just want to thank you for your support, and hopefully you submit all your statistics forms.
Thank you.
Thanks for all.
Mr. Ryan. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. You're a resident of West Hills, the fine third district, the West San Fernando Valley.
Look forward to the 4th of July event. Pardon me? Look forward to the 4th of July event.
4th of July event, yes, we are working on that, and your colleagues. Major 4th of July event, celebrating independence. The, um, concerns of the valley regarding quality of life, regarding development, you're all sensitive for those issues?
Absolutely.
And you will do your best to do representation for those folks in the valley who often times feel disconnected, dischanted.
Absolutely.
Thank you very, very much. I know you will do extremely well. Thanks, David.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any other members wishing to be heard? Saint None. Please open the roll of the confirmation of Mr. Iwata. Close the roll. Tackulate the vote. Item 4 is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
On the confirmation. Before proceeding with the rest of the business, uh, Mr. Clerk, let's return to the presentation session of the agenda. Chairman, Mr. Holden.
Dorsey Dawes, Dorsey Dawes! The best football team, high school football team in America. President members, gives me great pleasure to introduce to you some of our standing students and athletes from Dorsey High School, right next door, well here. Please welcome the 201 Dorsey Dawes Football Team, winner of the Los Angeles City C1, CIF championship. I didn't say CIF, that's all right. Teams are here with their coaches. These young men worked hard to accomplish their championship goals. Many, many challenges were put in front of them, but they prevailed and came on top. Let me just give you some of the accomplishments. Out of the 22 seniors, eight players have already signed letters of intent. They're going on to play college ball. Some of the schools they are going to include Oregon, Michigan State, San Jose State. Others will continue their education at local community colleges. Four of the players are scholar athletes. That means they have maintained a 3.15 or better above grade point average. The scholar athletes are Brian Young, Nate Weber, Jamal Faye, and Akeem Washington. Dorsey High School has put more players in Division 1, 2, and 3 schools than any other L.A.'s unified school. The school is the second in the nation in players who go on to pro football. The number one school is California again, Long Beach Poly. Mr. President, members, and these players, I just want you to understand one thing. You're having an early start in life. You got a great opportunity, and with that opportunity, you have to be focused. You got to have a vision, and your vision, and I'm telling you from an older gal I've been around for a while, should learn as much as you can. Education is number one. I'll also point out that for those of you who go on as part of being professional athletes, be mindful of one thing. I don't know anyone who's retired playing this sport, basketball, football, baseball, at 65. You just don't live that long in the business. So therefore, you have to have something upstairs. Don't ever forget that. I tell you one other thing. I miss the players from Crenshaw High, and Dorsey, where I played professional baseball. They were honored at the Board of Supervisors, and I said to them, "Do yourself a favor," and they give you the. Say no to drugs. Do not submit to pimp pressure.
La presión de los compañeros. Por favor.
Say no to drugs. You have lots of money, big car racing. The guy from San Diego the other day crashed himself, alcohol related.
Chocó, relaciones con alcohol.
Be mindful of that.
Tengan en mente eso, cuando ven esas cosas.
Be mindful of that when you see it on television. As they said to me when I went into the army, "Look at the guy next to you, right to your left." And when they start shooting those bullets, somebody won't come back home. And what I'm saying to you here today. Some of you will go on to be successful, and hear this message. Some of you will perhaps defy, but I hope you all listen. Because I'm speaking from my heart and from experience, and that's life, and that's what it's all about. You have your coaches here, area superintendent, and I won't mention all the names of the players, but Renee Jackson, area superintendent. Is she here? She's not here? All right. You have, uh, please. We have, at this time, we'd like to bring for Dr. Robert Simmons to tell us about the team and what they've accomplished this year. Dr. Simmons.
Good morning, council members. It's indeed an honor as well as a pleasure to be here this morning. Uh, when we were informed that we were going to be here, I was just so elated. You know, it's not, many politicians take out time from their busy schedule to recognize the accomplishments of things that are happening within their high schools and within their district. On behalf of Susan Lloyd Dorsey High School, administration, Dr. Evelyn McMooh, principal, Elena Brown Anthony, administrator of athletics, and my assistant, Frank Houston, we're honored this morning that Councilman Holden taking the time to honor a group of young men who have worked very diligently and trying to be the best that they can be. We're very fortunate that we had an opportunity to win the city championship. We call it our game. We won the game in the last six. We made history. Our young folks, not only athletically, but they're doing it academically. And we're proud. In Dorsey High School. Dorsey High School. In Councilman Holden's district. We're going to continue to live up to the expectation.
Y nomás quiero tomar un momento para dar las gracias a todos ustedes por su apoyo.
As well.
También como.
As all the magnificent coaches that we have at Dorsey High School. I'd like to take a moment and ask all my coaches to stand. This is Coach's end. We have our assistant head varsity football coach, Ralph Carwell, here this morning. Head coach, Paul Nutt, not be with us. Reiman and his family. But, Councilman Holden. It is a great pleasure. That I and my football team stand here and accept the recognition that you're giving to us this morning. God bless you, and thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
I just might say that it's a clear example of what the media thinks about good things that young people do. They don't think nothing about it, so they don't show up. I've gone to Dorsey Stadium, back around to Stadium. He ido al estadio de Dorsey, al estadio de Dorsey donde jugan fútbol. El pequeño partido de fútbol, 8,000 personas. He publicado una prensa, lo han escuchado, no aparecen. Solo tratan de conseguir un molotov, un cóctel, o un disparo, o algún problema en el área. Todos están allí. Todos están allí. Solo quiero que sepan que, jóvenes, jóvenes, no dejen que nada les cambie. Por favor, estoy de acuerdo contigo. Mantenganlo ahí. El éxito está en manos. Este es el director atlético de Dorsey High School, equipo de fútbol, 2001, LA Select, section C, CIF, campeonato. Dorsey versus Tav, 19 a 14. Les agradezco su dedicación y su logro a Dorsey High School. Gracias por ayudar a que los jóvenes entiendan que los obstáculos y obstáculos que se ponen ante nosotros, que nos ayudan a crecer, y que los superamos. En nombre del consejo de la ciudad, de los concejos de la ciudad, queremos felicitarlos y darles el mejor de ellos en los años a venir. Dr. Simmons. Tenemos una copia supera de estos certificados que presentamos al individuo. Gracias. Señor Labarge. Sí, señor presidente, miembros del consejo, señor Holden, gracias por traer los campeonatos de la ciudad. Habló del juego del milagro, 7 segundos, estás detrás y hay un mal tapón. El tapón pasa, ¿cierto? Deme los 7 segundos, porque es una gran historia, quiero escucharla. Esta es una gran, gran historia. Estábamos en el estadio de los deportes de Los Ángeles. Colosseum, lo siento, lo siento, colosseum, ahora estamosiguados, tan emocionados. Sin embargo, ¿qué transpiró? Estábamos dentro del 34 yard line, y hemos parado, 4º, no sabíamos si iban a intentar ejecutar el reloj en 7 segundos. Pero por alguna razón, decidieron puntear el balón. Punten el balón, el entrenador Carwell y su defensa han estado practicando este juego todo el año. 7 segundos, señaló el call, bloqueó el punto. El punto fue bloqueado. Teníamos a Henry Match pick up the ball, and then run it into the end zone, and end distorted. No más tiempo en el reloj. Dorsey se convirtió en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Gracias. Como el señor Holden habló al joven sobre su futuro, no olviden el pasado y el lugar en el que jugaron en Los Ángeles. Y cuando se vuelvan mayores, ya sea en el deporte o no, participen en el centro de reparación y ayuden al entrenador. Jóvenes, para que puedan sentarse y escoger el jurado ahora mismo, y regresen y vean al señor Holden otra vez para otro campeonato de Dorsey High. Felicitaciones a todos. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, señor Labarge. Tenemos buenas esperanzas, pero esto no hará que pase. Pero estaré aquí para acompañarlos. Está bien, vamos a ir hacia atrás y tomar un poco de tiempo. Gracias, señor Holden, tenemos dos momentos de inspiración hoy. Bien, ahora volviendo a nuestra agenda, señor fiscal, el siguiente artículo, números 1 a 3 en el reglamento de la agenda, cuestiones de audiencia pública. Temas 1 a 3, cuestiones de audiencia pública, no tengo peticiones de miembros del público para ser escuchados en estos temas. Debemos considerar las audiencias públicas abiertas y cerradas. ¿Algunos especiales? Temas 1 a 3, ninguno. Señor fiscal, abre la lista. Cierre la lista. Tocar el voto.
Trece islas.
Temas 1 a 3 están aprobadas. Temas número 10, perdón, 5 a 10, en el reglamento de la agenda, cuestiones de audiencia pública. Audiencias publicas han sido prohibidas. Temas 5 a 10, ¿algunos que quieren ser especiales? Temas 5 a 10. Ninguno. Señor fiscal, abre la lista. Cierre la lista. Tocar el voto.
Trece islas.
5 a 10. El siguiente artículo, por favor. Temas número 11 a 29, excepción de 19 a 23, que tienen cuestiones de audiencia pública. Temas 11 a 29, ahora ante nosotros. No tenemos a miembros del público para ser escuchados en estos temas. Debemos considerar las audiencias públicas abiertas y cerradas. ¿Algunos especiales? ¿Algunos especiales? 11 a 29. Ninguno. Señor fiscal, abre la lista. ¿Cuál es el asunto? Cierre la lista. Tocar el voto.
Trece islas.
Esos temas están aprobados, excepción de 19 y 23, que tienen cuestiones de audiencia pública. El siguiente artículo, en la agenda complementaria, el artículo 31 es un tema por el cual la audiencia pública ha sido prohibida. Este asunto fue continuado desde el viernes pasado, en la medida de la orden del consejo. El artículo 31 está ahora ante nosotros. La audiencia pública ha sido prohibida. Tenemos un par de cartas, un minuto de este tema, que tomarán un motion del piso para abrir la audiencia pública. Hagamos eso especial. Es hora, lo haremos especial. El siguiente artículo, el número 32, en la agenda complementaria, es un tema por el cual la audiencia pública ha sido prohibida. El artículo 32 está ahora ante nosotros, no tiene peticiones de miembros del público para ser escuchados en este tema. Debemos considerar la audiencia pública abierta y cerrada. ¿Algunos que quieren ser especiales? El artículo 32, ¿alguien quiere ser especial? Ninguno. Señor fiscal, abre la lista. Cierre la lista. Tocar el voto.
Trece islas.
El artículo 32 está aprobado. Señor presidente, el artículo 30 es un comentario. Quiero decir, tenemos que tenerlo en la escritura. Primero, el artículo 31. El artículo 31 está ahora ante nosotros. Señor Holden, está en el back, démosle un minuto para que regrese. Creo que Miss Han quería hablar sobre el artículo 31 también. 31, sí. Y también esperamos el retorno de señor Holden. Está ahora ante nosotros.
Señor presidente, miembros del consejo, mis queridos colegas. Estoy contenta que esto haya continuado. Saben que estaba enfermo el viernes, pero te diré cuánto estaba enfermo realmente. Estaba en el cuarto y todavía estaba viendo la cadena 35. Y vi todo el discurso sobre esto. Y solo quiero decirles, como presidente del comité de educación y vecindarios, fue muy evidente para mí, y creo que los otros miembros de este comité. Cuando escuchamos de la escuela, cuando escuchamos de la comunidad, cuando escuchamos de la Conservancia de LA, y cuando escuchamos de la alcaldesa, de la alcaldesa de educación. Claramente, el hotel embajador es un lugar donde hay muchos intereses. Mucha gente que hace mucho tiempo se sentía muy apasionada sobre este lugar. Y en realidad, la situación ha cambiado con la escuela ahora teniendo control del lugar. Y lo que mi recomendación es, es que pedimos al distrito que tenga control de este lugar. Continuar con todos los intereses en la comunidad, los padres, la comunidad empresarial, las alcaldías. Todas las que quieren que haya alguna preservación del hotel como parte de la escuela. Hay quienes quieren que ese lugar tenga espacio abierto. Mientras hay un bloque entre el corredor de Wilshire y el distrito escolar. Número uno es que el distrito necesita hacer una escuela ahí. No tengo que convenceros de que necesitamos más escuelas para nuestros niños. Quieren construir una o dos escuelas en ese lugar. Hay una necesidad de preservación en Los Ángeles. Era posible que podríamos retener una de esas grandes hoteles como parte de la escuela campus. Claramente, hay una necesidad de la comunidad empresarial para hablar sobre tener algún tipo de uso de retail en ese lugar. Pero lo que pasó en la junta de la semana pasada, hace la semana, fue que había un apoyo enorme de la comunidad para, número uno, tener una escuela ahí. No había tanto consenso para tener un uso comercial ahí. Había mucha gente que quería retener espacio abierto en ese lugar. Mi recomendación es que realmente queremos ir adelante y comenzar a formar el tipo de asociación que sé que he estado hablando de, y muchos de ustedes han estado hablando de, con el distrito escolar. Esta es una oportunidad para decir que pedimos al distrito escolar, para trabajar con los concejos, pero para trabajar con todos los intereses. El negocio, los padres, los personas con espacio abierto, los preservadores históricos, y venir con un plan que sea más conducente a todas esas necesidades. Claramente, todas esas necesidades no podrán ser satisfacidas en ese lugar. Pero mi recomendación, si queremos tener una relación con el distrito escolar, permitamos que tomen la decisión sobre lo que es en el mejor interés, número uno, de los estudiantes. Y luego tomen todo el otro interés en consideración antes de venir con el plan. Espero que aprueben mi reporte. Gracias.
Gracias, Miss Han. El siguiente, reconozco a señor Holden. Señor Holden, miembros del presidente, solo quiero agradecer a Miss Han por tener una audiencia sobre este asunto. Es una de las muchas que hemos tenido como concejo de la ciudad. La mayoría de ellos fueron antes de que este consejo fuera elegido. Y creo que tenemos algunos problemas, tal vez problemas legales, como el reporte, como aparece antes. En el parágrafo 1, línea 1, 2, 3, 4, dice, y el consejo de la ciudad toma la posición oficial que apoya el retención del aspecto histórico de la ciudad. Y eso dice que no debería, por eso, ser nuestra posición, revertir la posición que el consejo tomó hace muchos años, en 1989, cuando dijeron que el hotel embajador no tenía un uso histórico. Había un acuerdo mutuo entre la familia Shinn, la Conservancia y el consejo. Firmaron un documento legal, que dio a la Conservancia un año para reclamar el propiedad por la ley. Para aprender la ley, para el propósito de retener el dueño como un sitio histórico. Habiendo fallado en hacer eso, entonces la demolição, la orden de destrucción podría haber sido garantizada. Pero el consejo interviene según mi solicitud. Dijo que no debería haber demolición a menos que hasta el desarrollador llegara con el plan de desarrollo aprobado por el departamento de planificación. Para el propósito de desarrollar la ciudad. La idea era no tener un espacio abierto en esa ciudad donde el hotel embajador no estaría. Así que hubo un acuerdo oficial. Si vuelves y dices, no, la posición oficial es, entonces abre la puerta para la litigación. Porque se negó esa oportunidad previa. Y durante el intero, el distrito escolar decide invocar la ley de dominio de propiedad. Que dice que tomarían la decisión del departamento cuando la litigación comenzó nuevamente durante los últimos 14 años o así. Eso es lo involucrado. El distrito escolar durante el intero, estaba negociando con mis oficiales y otros, potenciales desarrolladores. Dijeron que estaban en favor de uno. Tenían una escuela y el uso comercial. Esa fue la intención del distrito escolar. Todo lo que les digo es que no podemos exigir, solo pedimos que consideren eso como parte del plan de desarrollo. No, no dice eso. Dice que debe estar, no dice nada más, tienes que ser claro. Y dice, miembros del presidente, creo que tenemos esta sección que dice, y el consejo toma la posición oficial que apoya el retención del aspecto histórico de la ciudad. Eso debe ser, quiero que lo deje. Voy a eliminar eso. Y cuando ellos van a decir, y que la comunidad debe ser amable, digo que recomendaríamos al distrito escolar que tengan un uso mixto cuando desarrollan su plan. No puedes exigirles que hagan nada, pero puedes certamente recomendar, el contenido de la acción original también. Gracias, señor Holden. Señor Berne.
Esto ha estado pasando por mucho tiempo, y todos sabemos la necesidad del consejo de educación, aunque no siempre hemos tenido la mayor relación con ellos. Son difíciles de trabajar con, puedo decirlo, he experimentado. Pero, habiendo dicho eso, la ciudad ha estado en limpio durante un número de años. Hay algunos problemas de preservación histórica, pero el problema clave ahí es si van a usar, para qué van a usar la ciudad. Ahora, si van a usarla para fines educativos, no tenemos ninguna jurisdicción sobre lo que hacen en lo que respecta a fines educativos. Sin embargo, en el momento en que la usan para un otro objeto, como un excuse comercial, entonces deben venir a la ciudad como cualquier otra persona para la permisión de usarlo y así sucesivamente. Así que, no sé si queremos involucrarnos en decirles lo que tienen que hacer. Ciertamente, puede haber una abertura para algo así, si quieren hacerlo. Pero no es dentro de nuestra jurisdicción decirles qué hacer. Y probablemente no nos escuchen de todos modos, Nate, sé que tienes muy buena intención. Porque he apoyado esto en el pasado. Y probablemente, sin duda, te apoyo en el futuro. Sin embargo, independientemente de lo que digamos, van a hacer lo que van a hacer. Y van a tener que lidiar con ciertos aspectos de la comunidad, con la preservación cultural, la preservación histórica. Aunque los años pasaron, volverá a surgir, lo sabes, habrá litigaciones, no, y así sucesivamente. La Conservancia está sentada ahí, esperando a ver qué va a pasar. Así que mi sugerencia es esta, que les pedimos que procedan, uses la propiedad a la mejor ventaja para la educación pública. Y que trabajaremos como parte para apoyarlos lo mejor que podemos. Si hay otros usos potenciales que quieran usarlo, seremos felices de trabajar con ellos y discutirlos con ellos. Eso es lo que tenemos que hacer, Nate. Tenemos que, no podemos, no vamos a darles la luz verde en este etapa del juego para que continúen con el uso mixto. Tienen que venir como cualquier otra persona cuando es algo más que educación. Así que, saben, todos queremos ver la ciudad desarrollarse, necesitan escuelas, deben poder avanzar. Pero para nosotros, tratar de decirles, no, solo están sentados esperando que nos digan qué hacer, ¿cierto? Cuando termine, está bien, puedes presionar el botón y puedes responder. Obviamente, si tienen algún uso que cumple con los criterios de la comunidad y del público y de la educación, vamos a estar apoyados en eso, sin preguntas. En todo respeto, incluyendo algunas de las experiencias que he tenido con el distrito escolar, que no han sido las mejores. Saben, tienen una necesidad, y tienen algunos nuevos miembros, y quieren cumplir su misión, que es proporcionar escuelas adecuadas. Y esto es solo una ciudad, y entiendo que tienen un programa ahora, que pretenden construir sitios en toda la ciudad, y estoy de acuerdo en eso. Pero no sé si podemos, no sé qué hace esta acción realmente, para ser honesto.
Gracias, señor Berne. Señor Labarge. Gracias, señor presidente, miembros del consejo. Soy miembro del comité y he escuchado su testimonio, y lo siento que Janice Han no estaba sintiéndose bien el viernes para mostrar su liderazgo y articular esto, como hizo esta mañana. También quiero agradecer a Neil Holden por todo lo que ha hecho. Pero ofrecer una amenda amable, solo que puedo decir esto, porque recuerdo parte de esta historia. Cuando empecé en la ciudad, fui a ese hotel, reuniones para el consejo, y recuerdo la gran lucha que tuvo allí, y también la lucha en la preservación histórica, y algunos acuerdos. Le pedí a nuestro fiscal de la ciudad ver lo que dijo el señor Holden, pero ofrece una amenda amable. Es que animamos al Distrito escolar de Los Ángeles a revisar los aspectos históricos de la ciudad. Encorajalos, siempre debemos animar a la gente a revisar los aspectos históricos de la ciudad. Fui a una escuela que quería ser destruida por el distrito escolar después del terremoto de 1971, pero la comunidad salvó. Lo más importante es los niños aquí, que están en autobuses en las madres, a las 6:30 del día, y viajan a la ciudad. Lo más importante es encontrar una ciudad escolar aquí. Y si hay una oportunidad de hacer alguna preservación histórica, apoyo a eso, pero le pediría que el fiscal de la ciudad esté oyendo aquí sobre ese asunto. El señor Holden habla de la posición oficial, si podemos cambiar, en lugar de decir posición oficial, pero que animemos al Distrito escolar de Los Ángeles a revisar los aspectos históricos de la ciudad. Porque todos los sitios son importantes, y también, dos, animarlos a mirar el uso, si es una posibilidad, porque no podemos construir más tierra. La tierra está aquí, tienen una ciudad en la calle, construyeron una escuela en el 7, en Union, y tienen el frontón de Wilshire que sigue, está en el primer distrito. Pero comenzó en el 4º distrito, y el 4º distrito se quedó ahí, y está siendo un gran lugar, pero han ampliado y construido una escuela Esperanza justo por el lado.
And it's a vacant lot, but they've expanded, built Esperanza School right by Little Street. They have the frontage on Wilshire. It may make sense to have some frontage on Wilshire to have that continuity of business. But also, the most important thing is that we give them some direction that they should build a school site there and look at it. But as I said, Ms. Hahn, I ask for a friendly amendment that Holden, Mr. Holden would agree to, that we encourage the Los Angeles Unified School District to review the historic aspects of the site. The Conservancy's going to fight for what they think is right, which is important. But in this process, they're also going to work to see if the building is safe for a school. It may or may not be. Would frame a lot of costs, but we should give them a little leeway and not put us in a bind. And I also wanted to say too, as I close, because it is a large site, and again, we can't build any more land, I'd like our police department to look at a 20th police station on the south side by A Street. So we have that joint partnership. If the bond passes, that's where it should go because there's no land, but the land that's there now. I thank you, and I hope we got that clear. If we can work to that direction, I think we can solve everybody's problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Holden. Mr. Labange, I think you kind of touched on what we're declaring to be official position, which you cannot legally do. If you do, you're going to be legally in trouble. Number one, a friendly amendment is fine. But let me just tell you, Mr. Burton, you don't represent the city. I do, you don't. Number one. Number two, you have not lived with the problem as I have. Number three, the businesses in your area didn't move out when they talked about when the school... The battle of the school has come and gone, and the school district prevailed. That's clear. At the same time, we still would like to save the business community. When the report says make the community friendly, I can interpret that many ways to make sure that the business community is part of the community as well. And if you have a school fronting on Wilshire Boulevard, that's not going to be friendly, and the school district is a way of it. In terms of the Conservancy, they have lost that battle. The school district cannot put $200 million plus dollars in that barn over there. They're trying to save it. That's done. We debated that over and over again. If you were paying attention, you would remember. That is done. Well, I know you don't remember this, but we give you some of those brain paths that will help you along the way. I think I said... You got that right. The fact of the matter is that... You speak, I push your button, Mr. Burton. The fact of the matter is that that battle is over. The school district is going to fight the Conservancy. I can tell you that right now, you're being involved because you're pre-coming to the council. And the district, who's going to wage a side of the school district to show that they're legally, the Conservancy has no standing. No standing in this contest at all. They gave it up in 1989. And that's the law. No standing, school district would prevail. All they're going to do is stall them, stall them, and stall them. And they'll come to each and every one of you, and you think that they have a point of view. They have no point of view. The documents have been filed, the county registry court is open, and with the city attorney's office. You're just not aware. Well, you have to do something. The fact of the matter is that all we recommend to the school district is that they consider the community being community friendly in order to save the business in the area, have some mixed use on the front of part. That's all I ask. And we can't demand it, Mr. Burton. We can simply request it, but since you know more about my district than I knew about yours when you needed a train station, when you needed that money set aside to acquire the land, to build the station, and put the rail there, when you knew more about it than I did, I gave you the money and walked the precincts for you. So go on now, do what you have to do. I'm saying the amendments are appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Mr. Burton. Mr. Burton.
Yeah, look, you know, this debate is really, we're really getting nowhere with it because there is a, there is a specific plan for this, and the plan calls for what it calls for. The rest, the ball is in the court of the school district. I don't have a problem with that, Nate. I'm just saying, excuse me, would you please? And the only reason you came out there to the train station is because I bought your lunch at the hot dog stand, the box box over there. And you put up a picture, and you signed your name for it when you were running for mayor, right? And I almost gave him an endorsement, almost, and I came to my senses, right? But anyway, Nate's point is that Wilshire is a commercial court, and that's what the plan calls for. And I just don't know what the purpose of any of this is because I think that the school district is going to do what they're going to do. When if they decide to do what the plan calls for, they have to come to us with their plans, which we will work with and encourage and help. And assuming that they're going to do something with the, you know, with building the schools that are necessary there, I would hope they're going to do that as quickly as possible. As far as the cultural thing is concerned, I guess the year has passed. I don't know what that is, but I'm sure we're going to hear from the preservationists on this issue before it's over. But anyway, you know, I think we're, I think this is a tempest in the deep eye. We're arguing over nothing because the plan has been adopted. All Mr. Holden wants to do is urge him to go ahead with the plan. Is that right? Okay, but that's, that's going to be in their court. They're going to do what they're going to do. I think when we approved, when we approved the plan, we approved what we were suggesting. Simple as that. Now, the rest is, the rest is up to the schools. But don't hold your breath.
Mr. Reyes.
Council members and colleagues, as I read the correspondence from the school district and the Conservancy, seems to me that we're all trying to get on the same page. I think the matter of... The question is more timeframe, timeline. When is this going to happen? How are we going to get those seats created for our young people to get to school? What do we do as a city to minimize that whole process that gets them into this whole gang culture and to the things that hurts our businesses in the long run? But I see here that the Conservancy has made it very clear. Is there room for multiple schools or commercial development? And they state the reuse plans leave plenty of room for future student growth or middle school campus. In addition, the reuse plan leaves 10 acres on the Wilshire Boulevard frontage untouched along for compatible commercial development opportunities that contribute to Wilshire Center redevelopment or additional school construction. The school district sends us a letter stating that they want to walk the process. They appreciated the meeting, that our colleagues helped, and a whole array of issues were raised, that we still do need to reach consensus. So I think we need to encourage this process to keep moving forward. We can't lose any more time. We need to build a school. All the positive elements are coming to play. We just need to keep our head above ground and stay focused on what we need to get done, that is, build a school, knowing that these elements will have their level of tension, but they're making room for it. So I think there's room for everyone to win here. Most important is our children, our kids. Let's not forget why we're doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco.
I just wanted to move the previous question.
We have one final speaker, Ms. Hahn, if we can honor her to close. Chair of the committee.
Thank you. I appreciate this lively debate, and I believe Mr. Reyes said it properly. What we're trying to do now is keep the process open, and that's all my committee report recommends, that we don't shut out mixed-use retail, we don't shut out looking at possibly preserving parts of the historic hotel, we don't shut out open space, we clearly don't shut out building added seats, we don't shut out open space. What we're doing is trying to form a relationship with the school district by encouraging them to work with all stakeholders, particularly the council district, to provide a plan that best takes into the interest of everyone who is clearly a passionate stakeholder in this site. I ask you to support the committee recommendation, which is a common sense approach to this problem. I ask for an I vote.
Mr. Holden. As members of this president's house, Ms. Hahn, you just cannot say that the city takes an official position that we're supporting. You can't.
For the friendly amendment by Tom Labange that says, "We encourage the school district to work on preserving the historic site," I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that.
And we can recommend that they, that the design, including developing a school, should be consistent with our general plan if at all possible. That hasn't hurt anybody at all. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holden. I believe we're now ready for a series of votes. Mr. Clerk, the guy's here. Was there a second, pointing clarification, was there a second to Mr. Holden's motion? So there's two matters before you. One is the report, which had a friendly amendment to it, and he also had Mr. Holden's motion regarding deletion council taking an official position that support retention of historic aspects of the site. And he also requested they at least do have a mixed use to the site and the contents of the original motion. As members of this president's house, for clarification, point of order, that we are amending the committee report, and I'm dropping my motion, amend the committee report, number one, to delete the part where it says the official position and encourage the Los Angeles Unified School District to review the historic aspects of the site. And that if they were to develop the site, do it with, consistent with the general plan. Okay. The chair of the committee said it's not... In consideration of general plan.
Consideration.
Okay. Seems to be accepted as friendly from a majority of the committee.
A little unfriendly, but I'll accept it anyway.
Okay. Let's go forth with a vote on the amendment regardless. I believe we should have a pause. Please open the roll on Mr. Holden's friendly amendment. Close the roll, tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Committee report has now been amended. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item as amended. Close the roll, tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Mr. Pacheco.
As members of this president's house, I just wanted to welcome the members of the S.A. Health Task Force, who are, and if you can all stand up, who are here in support of preserving the hotel. Ambassador, there you go, the ambassador. And also petitioning for preservation of the Linda Vista Hospital at this point. Just want to recognize them and thank them for coming out and being involved in our civic dialogue on this issue. Thank you, guys. This is all.
Next item, please. As members of this president's house, not on the agenda is special one. It's motion brought forward by Councilmember Burton, seconded by Councilmember Garcetti. Findings need to be made on this matter. City attorney.
I believe Mr. Burton wishes to speak on this. I'm not going to make the findings on this issue.
Mr. Burton. Mr. Burton. Special one, did you wish to speak to the findings, please?
Yes, I do. Members of the council, I recognize that this item was before as before. I understand that it went to committee instead of being dealt with. I can tell you that we have two elevators that work in this entire building, two elevators. Now, this has been going on for weeks, for months, in fact. I don't know why we haven't acted earlier and hired, brought in a competent firm that does elevator repair to get these elevators to working order. We have, we're losing hundreds and hundreds and thousands of hours of productive time from employees as well as council members and our staff that are not able to get up and down the buildings. I mean, it's unheard of. I don't know why we would allow something like this to exist for this long, and it went to committee and you didn't, I introduced this once before, you didn't do anything. Well, I'm introducing it again. And I think that, I know they've started demolition on some of the building in East, City Hall East on some of the third floor. But the fact is, if we could at least have access to the elevators, maybe a small corridor, so we could at least have our employees use the elevators over there to get up to at least to the third floor and walk across. I mean, it's just ridiculous that we are losing the time and effort and aggravation that goes with what's going on here. I think the findings, this is basically an emergency type situation. We have people that are unable to climb stairs. We could probably be sued. We could probably be held liable by the ADA in a situation like this, as a matter of fact. So my motion does two things. It provides for opening the bridge just to access the elevators. We can do that if they can continue with their demolition in other areas. There's one little channel they can walk around to get to the elevators there and bring in, hire a competent company who can do the work and get it done properly so that we have elevator service. I mean, I don't know how long you intend to let this go on. I would, I think the findings are very clear. This is an emergency situation. We need to act. We should have acted a long time ago, but we need to act today.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
I approve those findings.
There's a number of members who wish to be heard on the findings. Let me remind you, everybody, on the findings. Ms. Misakowski.
Well, I share Mr. Burton's concern. I don't think that this is a situation to be dealt with special. Let me suggest that we discuss tomorrow. We continue today, item 23, which was the committee report on the street closures, on the issue of the barricades, on the issue of identification, and on all these issues. And it seems to me that your motion is better discussed tomorrow as we discuss the overall issue of general services and they can give us a report as recommended by the committee. And I think that there's not, I agree with you, in fact, Ms. Hahn, and I voted on your motion in committee last week to affirmatively act in the direction you're talking about. But I really think it's better today rather than to put this over till tomorrow, when it will be under the whole committee report and we can talk about all of the issues together.
Mr. Pacheco.
May I just, I'm a little unclear. I think the item about the elevators on City Hall and opening the bridge might well fit within the ambit of the security, but I'm not sure that the hiring an outside elevator person for here would work. Next of having the report tomorrow, we can have general services tell us who they've been working with, what are the issues, what is the status of the elevators in that context.
Mr. Pacheco.
I share everyone's frustration, Mr. President, on how the elevators are not functioning and we have only two. But the fact that we have two will, I'm sure, survive any sort of ADHD challenge because we can always limit it to those people. Wheelchairs, if we chose to, because the rest of us, obviously, barring time, we can make it up and down the stairs. But on the findings is, this is not a crisis that is recent or that arose prior to the post of the agenda, so I can't support this today. I believe if we, and the short answer to Mr. Burton as to why we haven't moved on this, because we're facing a $250 million shortfall, and we're going to, we anticipate that during the mid-year, this will be one of the items that will be funded, but it's going to come at the cost of other items. For example, if you want to trade out the particulate trap expenditure of $8 million to pay for this, then we can do that. But at this point, we don't have that information, and I anticipate, and I understand that within a week, within two at the most, we will get that information coming out of the mayor's office for the mid-year. So I cannot support this today as, meaning the findings of having arisen after the post of the agenda.
Mr. Zine.
As members of this president's house, thank you. When we moved into this building, all elevators were working. Taxpayers spent $300 million refurbishing this facility. We found out the roof had to be replaced after that, and now we found out the elevators aren't working. My question is, general services has an obligation to restore this building, and it's been restored to the tune of $300 plus million. Another roof had to be put on, and now the elevators. What happened from the time we opened this building July 1st, or shortly before that, to today? Because all the elevators were working when we first came into this building. Now, all of a sudden, things aren't working. There's a contractor who was given the task to refurbish, not use a job.
This is, we're making, tracking the findings here. I understand the findings. But I want to extend the findings into reality of $300 million. And as far as the bridge, I think maybe we need to separate that from the elevator findings. But it's very frustrating, and this morning, Janice Hahn and I tried to come up the elevator from the garage, that wasn't working. And then we went to the freight elevator, that wasn't working. Then we sat down at the main elevator, and it was overloaded, and we ended up walking up the stairs. So it's not great inconvenience, but it's very frustrating. And I think that to broaden this out, the findings, where did we spend $300 million and who's accountable for that? Thank you. As members of this president's house, I would remind us, the manner we force, whether it's the findings and the motion being brought in, is something of an urgent nature that has come to our attention since the post of the agenda. Ms. Hahn.
Well, I'm going to support that we do take this as sort of an emergency motion. I agree with Mr. Burton on this, and as Ms. Misakowski said, she and I voted in the midst of our budget and finance committee to...
to authorize the immediate expenditure of money to repair the elevators. Even though we are in the midst of a $250 million budget shortfall, I feel it's a public safety issue. Uh, I feel it is unconscionable for us to have a building of this size and the amount of visitors we have coming, the amount of disabled people that are trying to use this building. Uh, it's more than inconvenience, in my opinion, it's a public safety issue. Uh, God forbid that we would have to evacuate this building in a timely manner, using the elevators. In case it's not something like a fire, it would be a disaster. So, I think it's an emergency, I think it's a crisis. I was frustrated that we couldn't get our colleagues to share the wisdom of Ms. Miskowski and I last Wednesday to move forward with this, so I think this is the next course of action. I'm gonna vote to say that this is an emergency, it should be brought up today and voted on. And I think it should be separated from the rest of the security issues, because there are bigger issues, there are bigger General Services issues. This is a crisis, it's a problem, and in my opinion, we are only lucky that we've not had a disaster befalling the last two elevators. But I did like the quality time I spent with my councilman Dennis Stein this morning, walking, trying to find a working elevator.
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss, pass. Mr. Berthold. Mr. Berthold. Did you wish to speak again?
Yeah, I just, Cindy, I appreciate you trying to help. I just, what frightens me is that we're gonna drag this on, and it's not gonna be back before the council is here today. I don't know why we need to debate this thing further, it's very simple. We either want to do it, or we don't want to do it. And I really feel that we ought to move forward today. You want to talk about it in committee after we've acted about it, that's fine. Because all we're telling them to do is to go out and hire a competent company. We're also telling them to open the bridge up, let us, let the employees at least have the ability to use the elevators which work over in the other building. We have, we have eight elevators in these city hallies that work. Now, I don't know why we deprive our employees of the ability to use those elevators. Also, what is this costing us in time? Nobody, you're talking about spending a few bucks to get the elevators fixed right, but when you're, when people can't get up and down the building, you're losing hours and hours of everybody's time. And you multiply this by the number of employees we have in this building, it's costing us a fortune. So, let's do it today and get it over with.
Mr. LaBanche.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Berthold, I'd like to support that, but tomorrow, everything's gonna be on that table right there. Tomorrow, they're discussing all the Henry P. Rio Bridge, the barricades around City Hall, is that correct? Everything's gonna be in here tomorrow. I understand that, but I think there's an opportunity to discuss it all tomorrow, which I think we should get it all out at once. And all the officials are gonna be, there's no one here, uh, the general manager of General Services is not here. You know, and I just think we should... All right, but I think it would be prudent for us to focus on this all tomorrow. In less than 24 hours, we can have all the various entities here to discuss it. So, I would support putting it all together tomorrow as opposed to discussing it today.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Berthold, colleagues, the motion lacks a source of funding to pay for these repairs. And unless you identify a source of funding, you can't ask me to sign a blank check, so I'm not gonna vote for it.
Ms. Miskowski.
I'm gonna move the previous question on the entire matter.
Okay, previous question has been moved, you are the final speaker in the queue, so that does end discussion. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. This is the findings vote. Everybody had a chance to vote. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six eyes, six no.
Failed. That does not pass, we do not bring Special One before us, uh, but we can agendize it or refer it to a committee. Mr. Berthold. Do you wish this matter to be referred to committee or agendized at the next possible council meeting agenda?
I would ask if it's gonna, you have this before you tomorrow, I would ask that it be brought, what time after? Was it in the morning or the afternoon? Oh, it's in council tomorrow? Okay, let's continue until tomorrow, and we can have the whole thing then. I just hope that we are gonna do something instead of just talking.
Madam City Attorney.
And as far as the funding is concerned, Mr. Pacheco, as far as the funding's concerned, we'll find the funding for this. It's costing us a lot more not to do it than it will cost us to do it.
Madam City Attorney.
I have no trouble with the portion of it that has to do with the bridge coming in tomorrow under security. I still do have an issue with the, um, talking about a contract for the elevators in this building coming under the ambit of the security, so, um... Council can decide what to do on that. Under your rules, however, normally, if it doesn't get 10 votes, it goes to committee. You can suspend those rules and send, and continue it or send it.
Yes, you can, Mr. Berthold. Ms. Miskowski.
I just discussed with Mr. Berthold that many of the items in his motion are relevant to the matter that's gonna be before us as a committee report tomorrow, we can amend the committee report for any other action that we deem necessary after we have a full discussion tomorrow.
Or you can bring that as an amendment tomorrow, the sections that are appropriate. Uh, and regardless, I do believe a couple of items pending in A T G S also speak to the bounds of the items in Mr. Berthold's special motion today, so we got the basis covered. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Oh, Mr. LaBanche.
Yeah, for an introduction, uh, we should ask these good people who are visiting us what they think about that right now. Please welcome from Caltech, the Architectural Tour Group, that's here on a special review of our great City Hall all the way from Pasadena. Give him a big hand, they're all related to Caltech in somehow, and they're here enjoying the City Hall. Welcome.
Mr. Garcetti.
I just also wanted to recognize, with Councilmember Pacheco, it's his district, but my former school, students that are here from Occidental College, as well as Regina Freers, Los Angeles Politics class. Um, I know you're gonna be sticking around, but I also wanted to recognize you publicly and ask if you'd stand up for the council to be recognized as well.
Are they waiting for their papers back, Mr. Garcetti? They're waiting for their papers back from you?
There will be no more extensions.
Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Holden.
The Architectural Support Group, it's, it looks good here, no matter, the elevators don't work. It's all right, we're gonna be all right, we're gonna talk, we'll take care of that tomorrow.
Let's get some help from Caltech, they'll figure it out.
Any other introductions? Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 30 is closed session, item due is that remain on the desk. Let's leave that at the desk and, uh, just, council keep. Motion is proposed and being referred, motions are posted and referred. Uh, council members' requests for excuse from council, Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused to arrive late on March 13th and 27th and, uh, Friday, April 5th. A motion is required.
Mr. LaBanche moves, Ms. Miskowski is excused.
And Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on March 5th and 6th and 13th and 15th for city business, motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Pacheco is excused.
Councilmember Ridda Thompson requests a excuse on Wednesday, February 27th for personal business, a motion is required.
I'll move that, Mr. Ridda Thompson is excused.
Councilmember Han requests a excuse on March 15th and April 12th for city business, this meets policy.
Mr. Han is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests a excuse on March 20th to arrive late in March 26th for city business, this also meets policy.
Ms. Perry is excused.
Councilmember Pacheco requests a excuse on February 26th to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business, this meets policy.
Mr. Pacheco is excused.
And Councilmember Zine requests a excuse to leave on February 22nd at 11:00 a.m. and be excused on May 3rd, a motion is required. Uh, Mr. Pacheco moves, Mr. Zine is excused.
The desk is clear, separate from session items. Okay, in accordance with California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. Before we do that, uh, public comment, let's take that next opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And Mr. Clerk, seeing no requests, public comment is closed. And now, in accordance with California law, the council will adjourn into closed session. I ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 30B, request for settlement in case of $2,600,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, fourth with, please.
And item 30C, the recommendation of City Attorney is to authorize expenditure of $215,000 in settlement of case.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, fourth with, please. Next item.
Uh, Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused on March 22nd to leave at noon, a motion is required.
Uh, Mr. Garcetti moves. The desk is clear. Are there any announcements? Adjourning motions? Mr. Zine, you have an adjourning motion? No? Okay, seeing no announcements or adjourning motions, thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.
Praise God.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.